Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the January 3, 2022 Selectmen's Meeting. If you'll all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
If we could keep our masks on, please, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had no public comment. Nobody indicated public comment. We have approval warrants. Rebecca, do you have the?
I have the numbers.
The list, you have the list?
Yes, I do. Okay, I make a motion to approve payroll warrant 22-27 in the amount of $168,716.14.
Are there motions or a second?
Second.
In a second, any further discussion? None, all in favor? Three in favor, two absent. Bill Warrant.
I make a motion to approve bill warrant 22-27 in the amount of $1,795,495.65. Broken down as follows: Town bills, $137,551.23; Penn Tucket, $1,017,752.33; EE withholding bills paid to vendors, $8,353.79; special revolving grants, $24,682.90; water and sewer, $252,612.96; light department, $354,542.44.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? None, all in favor? Three in favor, two absent. Approval of minutes, December 20, 2021, meeting minutes. Anybody read those? Dan, you weren't here for that meeting.
Right. I did read the minutes. I make a motion to approve them, but we only have two votes, so I don't think.
Why don't we table the minutes for the next meeting?
Correct.
We'll table December 20, October 26, and October 20, executive session minutes on those two. We have a motion to table?
Motion to table minutes from December 20, 2021, meeting minutes, October 26, 2021, executive session meeting minutes, October 20, 2021, executive session minutes.
Is there a second?
A second.
A second, all in favor of table. Three in favor, two absent. Appointments. Appointment of Justin Byrd, 84 Center Street, Groveland, to the position of senior laborer of the Highway Department effective December 25, 2021, full-time position, 40 hours a week, rate of $26.96 an hour, subject to a successful core recheck.
I make a motion to approve Justin Byrd, 84 Center Street, Groveland, to the position of senior laborer effective December 25, 2021, full-time position of 40 hours per week at a rate of $26.96 per hour and subject to a successful core.
In a second. Any further discussion? None, all in favor? Three in favor, two absent. We have appointment of Amanda Fisher, 12 Yorkshire Lane, Nashua, to the position of council and aging director effective January 17, 2022, full-time position, 37 and 1/2 hours a week at the salary of $65,000 a year, again, subject to a successful core recheck.
I'll make a motion to appoint Amanda Fisher, 12 Yorkshire Lane, Nashua, New Hampshire, to the position of council and aging director effective January 17, 2022, full-time position of 37.5 hours per week at a salary of $65,000 per year and subject to a successful core.
Sounds good. She previously worked at the council on aging as an outreach worker. Second?
A second.
Second, any further discussion? None, all in favor? Three in favor, one absent. Appointment of John May, 12 Atlantic Avenue, Andover, to position of reserve dispatcher effective January 3 through June 30, 2022.
I make a motion to appoint John May, 12 Atlantic Avenue, Andover, to the position of reserve dispatcher effective January 3, 2022, through June 30, 2022.
And second. In a second, that came with a recommendation of the police chief. Any further discussion? None, all in favor? Three in favor, two absent. Appointment of Sherri Saban, 63 Gardner Street, position of library assistant at the Langley Adams Library, effective January 3, part-time position, 18 and 1/2 hours a week, rate of $15.05 an hour, subject to a successful core recheck.
I make a motion to appoint Sherri Saban, 63 Gardner Street, Groveland, to the position of library assistant of the Langley Adams Library, effective January 3, 2022, part-time position of 18.5 hours per week at a rate of $15.05 per hour and subject to a successful core.
In a second. Any further discussion? None, all in favor? Three in favor, one absent. Vote to the board. Vote to approve and sign the Washington Hall lease agreement.
I make a motion to approve the Washington Hall lease agreement. I assume it's for a period of one year or more. Claire, please help us. Five years, okay, I did read it. Okay, so it's a period, so it's starting now then for five years, calendar years? Okay, so it's a period of five years.
It says not more than.
Not more than, okay, not more than five years.
Yeah, it says five years. The term of this lease shall be a period of not more than five years commencing on January 1, 2022, and ending on December 31, 2027. In the packet, there is a copy of the lease agreement. Kathy, you made a motion, Dan, a second? Second?
I seconded it.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, motion and a second, any further discussion?
Well, I'll make the motion that it's commencing on January 1, 2022, and ending on December 31, 2027. That's what it says in the lease.
Okay, that's what it says in the. Are there a motion and a second? No further discussion, all in favor of the lease agreement, Washington Hall lease. Three in favor, two absent. Vote to ratify and sign the collective bargaining agreement for the Highway Department. Rebecca, did we get anything back on that?
No.
We'll need a motion to.
Table.
That. Motion to table for the Highway Department collective bargaining agreement.
Make a motion to table the Highway Department collective bargaining agreement.
Motion, is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? None, all in favor? Three in favor, one absent. Vote to ratify and sign the collective bargaining agreement for the Water and Sewer Department. We need a motion to table that one.
Make a motion to table the collective bargaining agreement for the Water and Sewer Department.
Motion in a second.
A second.
Second, oh, that's a motion to table, no discussion, all in favor? Three in favor, two absent. Vote to approve and sign the Class II used car license for Quick Service Transportation Corporation, doing businesses, Quick Auto, 737 Salem Street. This is the site of Price Right Garage, which sold out. Motion to approve?
What'd you say, they sold out, the transfer?
What's that?
The transfer?
No, it's not a tran, they can't do a transfer to the used car license, they have to apply for a new one.
So it's a new owner.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second, further discussion? Is the owner here? No. Would've been nice if he was here. I had a question for him. Up over the weekend, there were two cars he had out for sale with no used car license. I wanted to ask him about that. But is a motion and a second? Any further discussion? None, all in favor? Three in favor, two absent. Discussion and possible vote, letter from Chief Valentine concerning contract negotiations. This was in our packet.
Yes.
The chief is, contract expires June 30, and he's looking for a new contract. Rebecca, I know you got some information on this.
No information, other than the fact that, as the contract states, he needs to inform the board that he's ready to renegotiate.
Okay. And I thought you were gonna, I thought you were gonna set up a meeting between yourself, the chief, and the chairman?
Yes, I can do that.
Oh, okay. All right, that was the same as was done. For who?
I believe that's how it was initiated, but Denise was the finance director.
Okay, all right, so you'll set that up at the chief's convenience. And I was. Thank you. Review open meeting law complaint against the board filed by Elizabeth Coniff and discuss and approve written response to the complaint. We had a, received a open meeting law complaint from Beth Coniff. This was the last meeting that we had on the, was it the 20th? And the board went off camera, shut the camera off to meet with the finance board. And with an open meeting law complaint, we did get a response from the town attorney. Rebecca, you want to read that?
Read the letter?
The, the response from the town attorney on the open meeting law response.
Did you want me to read the letter into the record?
Sure, sure. And, yes, yes, this was, you know, I spoke against going off camera on that one, and I just felt it was the wrong thing to do. We did meet with the finance board, no votes were taken. And in hindsight, what I should've done was state what I did, that I didn't like the idea of shutting the camera off, what are we trying to hide? And I should've, I shouldn't have participated in the meeting, I didn't have much to say in it, but I still think it was wrong despite what the, what the email from the town attorney says. But we need to do, we need to file a response and send it to the state. Do you mind reading it? Or you want me to read it?
Sure, either or.
What's that?
Either or, whatever.
Go ahead.
Okay, so this will be a response from the Board of Selectmen to the Attorney General in regards to the open meeting law complaint. Dear Attorney, bend in, please be advised that this office serves as town council to the town of Groveland. The town's five-member elected Board of Selectmen received an open meeting law complaint dated December 21, 2021, from Ms. Elizabeth Coniff. A copy of the complaint is enclosed. Ms. Coniff claims that the board violated the open meeting law at its December 20, 2021 meeting by voting to turn off the local cable access camera when it reached the final agenda item on its meeting notice, which was intended to be a joint meeting of the board and the Finance Committee for a workshop session to discuss various topics. In fact, the Finance Committee did not have a quorum present, so the committee could not formally conduct business. The board and those Finance Committee members present held a discussion but took no votes. The complaint also states that prior to the December 20 meeting, board member Kathleen Castronellis and town administrator Rebecca Oldham met. While the reasons for this statement being in the complaint is not clear, obviously, a single board member speaking to the town administrator does not implicate the open meeting law. The board acknowledges that prior to discussing the final agenda item, it voted three to one to shut off the local access television camera, but further stated that this was not a violation of the open meeting law. During 2021, the board conducted numerous remote meetings with public access via Zoom, but in the recent months, the board also conducted several meetings in person, and these meetings were posted as such, typically with the local public access television also providing live coverage. This was the case with the board's December 20, 2021 meeting, although it should be noted that while the initial part of the meeting was broadcast on local access television, the meeting notice did not state that it would be provided. Enclosed with this letter are copies of the board's meeting notice, as well as the town website page with the link to the meeting notice, the latter stating that the board's meeting would be in the Town Hall Center Room. Because the meeting was posted and conducted as an in-person meeting, and there were, in fact, members of the public present in the audience, both before and after the cameras were turned off, there was no obligation to keep the camera running for the last agenda item. For in-person meetings, the cable broadcast is provided merely as a public convenience. At the December 20 meeting, the broadcast was not being provided as adequate alternative access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, which is only required for remote meetings. The board's meeting was posted and conducted as an in-person meeting, and so no alternative access was required, and it did not violate the open meeting law for the board to turn off the camera. In summary, the allegations in the complaint do not state a violation of the open meeting law, and the board denies that there were any violations regarding its December 20, 2021 meeting. No further remedial action is required.
How do you do that so fast? You type that fast, too?
I wish.
What's the wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve the letter from KP Law in response to the open meeting law complaint.
And that, and state that, Beth, you have something to add? Please.
I have just a couple of questions regarding the meeting. I wanted to know what the benefit was to the residents of Groveland to turn the cameras off. Secondly, you outsource your meeting minutes, and I wanted to know who took the minutes for the turned-off camera time, and I'd like to request a copy of those minutes. Thirdly, all the minutes are televised that the Board of Selectmen has. When your cameras were not functioning in this room, you moved over to the Public Safety Building to have all of your meetings, so that they could be televised for the residents of Groveland. Next, since the COVID-19 problems, you've always also posted a Zoom link on all your meetings. There was no Zoom link on this meeting. And lastly, it appeared that some of the members of the Board of Selectmen were aware that this was going to go off camera, and some members were not, so I wondered if there was a discussion prior to, and if this was discussed prior to the start of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we want to answer some of the questions?
Mr. Chairman, this was not on the agenda. These questions were not submitted to us in advance, and personally, I just feel that there's an undercurrent of somebody feels that some wrong was done, and when in fact, the Board of Selectmen has conducted workshops in prior years, and that's what this was, a workshop. The School Committee has conducted workshops in prior years, and workshops are typically informal, they're not led by the chairman, they're just an informal workshop to review documents and get informed. I have no problem if you wish, as chairman, to insist that the workshops be televised. I said you could have a discussion of it, but no, I'm not going to answer all those questions, you can submit them. There's no legal requirement. I feel a very personal attack, and I am going to take that under consideration at this time, especially since these questions were not submitted to our agenda.
Well.
That's improper.
I don't see how that you could say it's not on the agenda, because under discussion and possible vote, review open meeting law complaint against a board filed by Elizabeth Coniff, and discuss and approve written response to the complaint.
Well, we have a written response in front of us, but what I didn't have in my packet or in front of me were these questions. Why not? Mr. Chairman?
I don't believe the, that I was notified that there was going to be a discussion of this.
Well, the discussion is on our response from KP Law, not on the questions that you still have, so I guess what I suggest is you submit the questions for a future agenda, if that's okay with you.
And I suggest.
Because the vote and the discussion.
To notify the person who made the complaint if you're going to discuss it, which you didn't do either. So you want.
Well, I don't, I don't do notification for agenda. I'm echoing.
The board did not notify, so therefore, I didn't have the opportunity to present my questions to you.
Right, so that would be a chairman of our board.
This is a response to the complaint, just to be clear. So this is a response that would be submitted to you as a complaint from the town. So what we, what they needed to approve tonight is a response that they were going to send to you, so that's why you weren't notified, because we didn't have approval to send it to you without the board making that collective vote. So town council had to write the vote on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen have to approve that as their defense, that then gets sent to the complaint and then also to the Attorney General's office. So there would be no notification, since it's not an official response until they approve it.
And so in the response, is it noted that a workshop is acceptable during meeting time? Should you have closed the meeting before you started the workshop? Because a subcommittee can actually meet to discuss information, as long as it doesn't have to do with the hiring of an additional employee. So you could've met as a subcommittee on a separate meeting night, you could've had a quorum as the Board of Selectmen, but you chose not to do it that way. You chose to take an open meeting, shut off the cameras halfway through, and have your discussion. So I still would like to know what the benefit is to the residents, not to have that televised and not to be able to listen to your discussions.
Is somebody trying to get in?
Selectmen O'Neill is joining by Zoom.
Sure. Bill, go ahead if you want to weigh in. Can you speak up? Can you hear me? Jason, can you, if you can, help us out?
The speaker's always maxed out. I, it's some vivid.
You hope as high as you can go? Excuse me? Bill, can you try it again?
Can you hear us, Bill?
I can hear you.
Yep.
Yeah, it just went, everything went dead for a couple of minutes. There was no sound, there was, you know, this is, Coniff was speaking about something, and it just died.
Did you, did you want to make a comment?
Um, no, I believe the town council summed it up pretty well. I don't think there's anything that needs to be added.
Nothing there, okay. Are you going to participate in the meeting remotely?
Excuse me?
Are you going to participate in the meeting remotely?
Yes, as best as I can and as long as I can.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I don't know how long I'm going to last, I'll be honest with you.
Okay, all right. Any votes will have to be a roll call vote.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dan, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, could I chime in?
Yes, can you wear your mask, please? Thank you. No, your mask.
I want to be heard.
Well, yeah, you can.
You hear me?
I teach the mask all day, you can do it. Thank you.
My research tells me that there's no requirement that meetings be televised, okay? So technically, town council's correct. I do object to the paragraph where, quote, he says, "During 2021, the board conducted numerous remote meetings with public access via Zoom, but in recent months, the board also conducted several meetings in person, and these meetings were posted as such." So he went on to discuss that. I don't think we should be rationalizing whether or not to have the cameras on or off. If we're here, we want as much inclusion and transparency in the process, whereas no technical violations that I could see violated open meeting law. The conclusion is accurate, but I don't, I object to the rationale, simply because we didn't televise previously. I don't think that's a good rationale for, you're here, the cameraman was here, I wasn't at the meeting, if I was here, I would've objected to it. Why would you shut it off? To me, there's an appearance that you don't want people to watch, and I'm not going to be accusatory of that, it may be innocent. It may simply be that a workshop is a lengthy, drawn-out, mundane thing that's kind of boring like accounting. You can sit and look over my shoulder and watch me do debits and credits all day long. I don't know that you'd be interested in that, it's like watching paint dry. I've polled a few people, handful, maybe six, eight people, and it was kind of a flip of a coin. Half the people said, I don't see a big deal in it, and the other half the people said, keep the camera rolling. Well, when there's a split decision like that, I think we are on the side of transparency. I'm not accusing you of anything, Kathy, or anyone who voted for it, but I think if we're here, keep the cameras rolling. I don't want to rationalize the decision, I think the decision or the response from the Board of Selectmen should simply be there's no technical violation of, of the open meeting law. I think the board should have a discussion on what is our protocol for having the camera on or off. Again, I wasn't at the meeting, but my understanding was it was preliminary meetings, they didn't have a quorum on the Finance Committee, but we're going to talk about the budget. You know, we're going to have some budget issues, okay? We're going to have to make some tough decisions, I anticipate, and I think the people should know, you know, how we formulate our opinions on that, because they're going to affect some people, you know? If we're capped at Prop 2 and 1/2, if some people want us to spend more, I mean, I'm inundated with emails on enough's enough on the teacher's contract, pay raises. Well, if we're going to go to the taxpayers and ask for them to pay more, I think the cameras ought to be rolling and ought to, they ought to know that we're stuck, we're backed into a corner, and ultimately, it's going to be their vote that matters, and I think more information would be beneficial for us to make decisions in not only the people we serve. So I'm going to err on the side of keeping the cameras on, but I'm going to oppose the motion to accept this, I think it ought to be redrafted. I think it ought to be redrafted and just be succinct and clear and concise, but there's technically no requirement to have the cameras on. But I see paragraph two as kind of being a rationale as to what you did before. If there's a prior course of dealing, there's an expectation of the parties that people stayed home. Yeah, everyone could have, as soon as you shut the camera off, got their cars and drove down here. There's a pandemic going on. A lot of people are apprehensive about it. I'm not as apprehensive as others, but I do respect people's own personal concerns for their own health and safety. It's a personal decision. But to expect people to come down here and this time and time and place, I think is unreasonable. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I made a motion to approve the letter from KP Law. Did Bill O'Neill hear that?
Bill, did you hear that?
Yes, I heard.
It was a motion to approve the letter. Did you receive a copy of the letter? Okay. All right, there's a motion on the floor to approve the letter. Is there a second?
A second.
And a second. Further discussion?
Yes, I do want to say something.
Go ahead.
So Selectman McDonald, you said you weren't at the meeting, and I was informed by the chairman that you weren't at the meeting because you thought the agenda was kind of light, as it was a workshop. So we were trying to just have a separate workshop meeting, and we couldn't get our schedules to coincide, and that's why we ended up having to approve payroll warrants and bills, which are decisions and votes, which we definitely did on camera. The lowering of the cameras was just to allow for the informal discussion and questioning of a history of financial data, not a forward-looking budget projection or anything of that sort. I can see from the reaction of the town clerk, though, that she feels that something else happened. I don't know what you think happened or didn't happen, but I can tell you from my point of view, as a person who's volunteered for this town for near about 30 years, I always come into this job or the job on the Finance Board before this or any position I've held in town with the best of intentions and an open and honest approach. And I treat other people the way I would like to be treated. I don't inquisition people. I don't call them names. Some of that has gone on in our meetings, and it's caused there to be some discomfort between us and our Financial Board. I understand that, and I asked to start to build a bridge there that we could have a workshop with them without the cameras rolling, hoping that an informal discussion where we asked questions about a history of expenditures and revenues would help us all become informed and be on the same page. Unfortunately, I see tonight that the board is still divided. I wish we could work together better. I'm willing to be open and transparent. I know I didn't do anything wrong, and I didn't break any laws, and I went into the meeting with the best of intentions. So my vote is to allow the attorney to issue the letter that shows that we did not break the open meeting law, that we did try to have a truthful and earnest workshop in which no votes were taken and no decisions were made in hopes of building a bridge with our Financial Board, because in recent meetings, that bridge has been burned. Okay? So I'd like to be able to work with our boards. I'd like to be able to work with all of our departments, and if it sometimes takes an off-camera discussion to allow people to feel comfortable, I think that's okay. I know on the School Board, we did that at a time when the school committee was having trouble. We had a workshop. We talked about what it takes to get the board to work together. Maybe our board needs to do that. I mean, I just feel that I don't need to be on a camera to be truthful and honest. I think it's great that we broadcast, and I fully intend that we'll broadcast as often as possible. And if people feel on my board that we should just broadcast a workshop, as long as we can run it like the workshop was run informally with us facing the board and the camera on the backs of our heads, that's fine. I just didn't think that would be able to be done, if you know what I'm saying, with a camera. So that's all I have to say on it. I guess I have nothing further to say. Can we call for the vote on the motion?
All right. Let Beth first. Go ahead.
It still comes back to the question, what was the benefit to the residents of Groveland to take it off-camera?
Oh, okay.
You are stating that you would like to be open and transparent.
Yes, I will tell you that.
Kathy, could you let her finish, please?
That is not open. That is not transparent.
Okay. The benefit to the taxpayers of Groveland is that the more that we can collaborate with our Financial Board, which is representative of the taxpayers of this town, the better process we can have at budget time. It takes a lot of discussions and often compromises to reach what will hopefully be in the best interest of all the townspeople. And that's all we were trying to do at all times.
You want to let Dan respond first? Go ahead, Dan.
As far as your question goes, I don't think it served the people of the town. It's not a litmus test of honesty, okay? It's just, do people want to hear what we have to say? And if the answer is no, then what am I doing here? I'll go home. I think you care. And I think the more things impact you and hit your home and my home, you're going to care more. Just want to point a clarity. I didn't go to the meeting. I talked to Chairman Watson on that, and I didn't think they would move forward because what Chairman Watson had told me was they didn't have a quorum on finance. I didn't think it would move forward. I didn't think there would be any discussion on budget or anything simply because they didn't have a quorum. So with that, there was nothing but warrants on there. So my son had a basketball game. He's playing basketball. The Penticott played Newbury Park. So I said, if you don't need me, I'll go to my kid's game. So if the board needed me here, I would have been here. When I'm not here, look what happens, you know? But, you know, Kathy, I want to work with you. This is New Year. I want to hit the reset button. I want to work with you, okay?
Thank you.
But the big picture is, do people want to watch what we're doing? Or don't they? I think they do. And if even one person that wants to know what's going on in town, I think they deserve the benefit of that. I mean, it's just, I don't know that it's a.
Can I make a suggestion?
51 you win, a 49 you lose issue. And I'm not accusing you of dishonesty, Kathy. If I had a problem with that, I would say it. I'm not shy.
I know.
Okay? But we shouldn't be arguing over whether or not cameras on or off.
I think.
Go ahead. You want to respond?
Yes, I just think, Dan, I think what we need to have is like a discussion amongst when all the board is here about how and when we'd want to have a workshop, because I think that's, the problem is we had a workshop within an open meeting, and it didn't look good. I get that the optics of it didn't come across well. But again, there are minutes of this. Everything is detailed. It was very informative, and I think that in order to make sure that the public is informed, we should try to summarize that meeting on camera at a future date. But I do think we should have a discussion about time and place for workshops, because they do have a time and place on boards. And that's all. We might as well move on.
Beth, please.
And that's exactly. You can have a subcommittee meeting with a quorum of the Board of Selectmen, and that is fine, as long as you stay on topic with finance.
Yep.
Finance can have a quorum or not have a quorum as part of that subcommittee meeting.
Right.
But it's not during an open meeting. You publicized it. You published it as an open meeting. It was on your agenda, and then you shut off the cameras. You voted to shut off the cameras.
Right.
You didn't vote to have someone take minutes of the time that you're off-camera. Your minutes are done. They're outsourced by a person who watches the television and then does the minutes for you. So I'm not sure who you had do the minutes during your off-camera discussion, but that wouldn't be available to the person who normally does your minutes. So there are a lot of questions.
Right. So I understand. So I understand where you're coming from, and I will tell you that we do have minutes. We did understand and know that with a workshop, you still have to summarize the content of a workshop. That is documented in the Selectmen's handbook and noted by other boards that have had workshops. So those we will have available. So we didn't miss a beat here. We didn't try to not.
You took it off-camera.
We did.
You took it away from the viewing audience of the residents.
Yes, in order.
The residents who watch and want to know what's going on in the town of Groveland, and the most important thing they want to know right now is the finance.
Exactly.
The finances of the town and where we're moving forward.
Yes, and as I've said to you before.
Taxes have gone up, and there are many concerned residents.
Yes, and there's also a Concerned Finance Board that has been somewhat under attack on camera, and they wanted to try to build a better collaborative relationship with the board. We were hoping the whole board could be here, but sometimes that kind of collaboration has to occur in a workshop setting. That's all.
I hope you do it as a subcommittee meeting in the future and not as an open meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I was troubled by the whole thing. I didn't think it was right, but I was going to get into it when we accepted the minutes. We did table it, because if you look at the minutes of that meeting, it looks like the minutes clerk took the minutes for that joint meeting, which isn't the case. So these minutes have got to be rewritten with the person that took the minutes for that joint meeting. That person has got to put their name on the actual minutes that were taken and who took it, because according to this, it looks like the minutes clerk took it. That was impossible. It wasn't on camera. So I was going to vote against that and talk about that when that came up for a vote, but if you read this list, the minutes of that meeting on the 20th, it looks like the minutes clerk took the minutes of that meeting that was off-camera. How did she know what went on? She didn't take them. Somebody else, somebody's got to take ownership of those minutes. So I'd like to see for the next meeting that reflected on who took the minutes and not try to have our minutes clerk take responsibility for that. So I don't know who took them, but that needs to be corrected before we accept those minutes. Any further discussion? I thank you, Beth, for your comments. Do we want to, there's a motion on the floor and a second for the response to the KP Law. Beth, you still here? Oh. If we vote this to send this into the state, you still have a rebuttal afterwards, the way I read it? Okay.
I have not received anything back from the state yet regarding my.
Yeah, I think that's because we haven't filed ours, but if we file this paperwork and then get a response, you have a chance to challenge that at, okay. That's the way I read the thing. All right, there's a motion on the floor and a second. Any further discussion on sending that to the state?
Mr. Chair, I would just say that we only have a certain amount of time to respond to the complaint legally, so if there is going to be a motion, if it's more so to change the letter as written and drafted, at least then we won't open the town up to legal liability. That would be preferred.
Yeah, you're right. I think we need to send it the way it is. So no further discussion. Roll call vote because Bill's remotely, Bill? Yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Dan?
Pause.
Myself, yes. Three in favor, one no, and one absent. So we'll send that in and we'll get a response. Beth, I guess you left. Oh, no, you're there. Hopefully, we get a response, and they have a certain amount of time to do that. Thank you. Did you receive a copy of that? I'll get your copy. Initial review of the American Rescue Recovery Act Fund projects. Chief Valentine, you had, you're up. No?
The pumper?
You.
The BLS.
What's on the agenda?
The.
Pumper is.
Pumper?
Yeah, the truck.
We're currently in desperate need of a replacement pumper.
Yeah?
Yep.
You got questions for me on it, or did my letter expire?
No, this is something you want to, this is something that you want to use the American Recovery Act for purchase of the pumper.
Oh.
That's a breakdown of the letter I sent.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the chief? The chief is looking to use some of their money to purchase a pumper, class V ambulance, currently.
Oh, I see this.
Currently a 1991 open cab concept pumper, running as engine three. During the past two years, call volume has risen. It's at 671 calls for service, 63% medical. Currently at 2020, a run volume increased by 15%.
2021, let's see.
The replacement of the apparatus will prepare the town of Groveland for any emergency calls. The new apparatus will be safer for the firefighter, as it will completely enclose. Truck will be licensed, class V ambulance for any medical emergencies up to and including another surge of coronavirus. Are you anticipating another upturn?
We are in the middle of it.
Okay. That's just the synopsis of the letter. Maybe the question for Rebecca, how do we, do we need to take a vote on the chief's request for this, to put in a request for it or a discussion?
So essentially, the town is receiving about $2.1 million of American Rescue Recovery funds from the federal government. They're coming in two separate batches. One is a direct allocation from the federal government. The other is a county allocation that is coming through. There's additional monies that is being issued as part of a spending plan as part of the state. So towns and cities are now able to take those funds and use them in the three bucket categories that are available for the use of said funds. Originally, when this all started to trickle down, the board had tasked me with taking a look closer at what would be eligible, working with the different departments and trying to figure out exactly what the departments needed and what would be in the best interest of the town, and put together a list of projects. One of the projects happened to be the truck, based upon what the fire chief had mentioned. So it is really up for the board to make a decision as to whether or not they would like to use $600,000 of the $2.1 million allocation towards the purchase of said truck, or whether or not they would like to have further conversations, or whether or not they would like to wait until they have more comprehensive list of the proposed projects from others. It's really up to the board to determine exactly how they would like to see these funds used, and we are just here to try and give you some ideas of what we think would be in the best interest of the town, employees, et cetera.
Okay, so the chief, approximately $600,000 to replace engine three. Engine three, my understanding, is not on the road right now. You need a vote from us, a blessing from us, to go ahead and pursue this?
As Rebecca just mentioned, it's going to take the Board of Selectmen to decide if that's the way they want to spend the money.
Okay.
I'm asking for a portion of it to buy that truck. Okay. And I've given you the reasons that we need this basic life support ambulance by a truck. In the graph, it shows that over the past two years, we've added 105 EMS calls for about a 68% increase in EMS calls, with a 15% increase in calls for 2020. And then again, this year, we did a 12% increase in calls, 791 for the calendar year. So it's showing that we definitely need to replace this truck, and it predominantly runs. And it predominantly runs EMS calls.
Bill, any comments?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. Well, I understand this pumper truck is circa 1991.
That's correct.
So I couldn't hear him.
He asked if it was in 1991.
And the pumper truck, what was its main purpose when it was first purchased? Was it to put out fires? Was it to pump water?
Now, if you look at the history of the fire department, initially, it was to put out fires. Then it became, we became a multi-emergency agency as far as hazardous materials and medical calls and public service as far as pumping out wet basements. So predominantly, our calls have become medical emergencies. So we've licensed these trucks as basic life support ambulances, and Trinity does our transport. We do our medical calls. Trinity does our transports.
Correct. So right now, that 600,000 represents by quick math, 29% of the total, 2.1 million. My question is, as the, I guess the whole, the whole, I'm a little fuzzy right now, so give me a chance to figure my words out here. The whole scenario has changed somewhat since that pumper truck was first purchased in 1991, which was what, 30, 40 years ago, right? Do you think that there'd be, in light of the new way the truck is used, that a more appropriate vehicle could be utilized for a lesser cost? Am I making sense?
Yeah, you're making sense, but we still have to fight fires. So if we're at a medical call and we get a reported house fire, we need to have that pumper with us. So we would go from that medical call to that fire call. I understand that Groveland has not done many back-to-back calls until the past year. Matter of fact, today, this morning, we had three medical calls at the same time. This afternoon, we had two medical calls at the same time. We're doing it more and more every day. So the need for that truck to be the multi-emergency vehicle is a necessity.
So, okay, so if there's a fire, then the pumper truck is essential. If it's a medical call, then it's probably overkill. Would you agree with that?
No, because we have to carry the equipment on this pumper. And because we're a BLS licensed vehicle, we have certain equipment that we must carry in accordance with the license through OEMS through the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
And does that require a pumper truck to carry it? Or could you utilize a smaller, yet similar type of vehicle?
You could use a smaller truck to carry that equipment, but if I catch a fire while I'm at that medical equipment, now I have to run back to the station and get the truck with the water to go back to the fire, which is wasting time.
Okay, my next question is, have you looked at two vehicles that would serve both purposes at a smaller cost? So say a utility vehicle that could be used for emergency calls and then a smaller pumper that you'd call out if there was a fire at the medical call and then thereby saving a few bucks there. Has that option been looked at at all?
No, this is the lowest price.
I'm just trying to figure out a way to shave $600,000 down, you know what I mean?
No, I'm not taking it personal in any way, shape, or form, I promise. I'm answering the questions. It's NFPA.
It's your money too, you know?
No, NFPA and OSHA standards say that I need a fire truck to carry so much water and can pump so much water and carry so much hose and so many ladders. There's minimum standards. The smaller truck won't do that in the NFPA, so we won't be meeting the minimum requirements. As far as the fire truck, the pumpers are.
I know some of these questions have been long overdue.
Well, that's the other thing. We have this opportunity with this money. It's not going to come from the taxpayers. I'm going to be honest with you. My capital improvement is going to show that we need a pumper so the taxpayers can pay for it or this opera funding can pay for it.
I was on Capitol for four years before I was on the board.
Correct. We've been trying to get this truck replaced for a long time.
It's got more dents on it than you could shake a stick at. I get it, I get it. I'm done. Thank you for answering the questions. I appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody else? Question for the chief? Dan?
Question for Rebecca. $2. something million. What are the restrictions on those funds? What I'm driving at is, in terms of priorities, are there competing interests here? Because again, this is the first, you know.
So there will be competing.
First go around, I guess, right? So before I say yes to you, you know, what are the other needs for the funds? I mean, can we just salt it away in stabilization? Can we use it for debt service and pay for the ladder truck? I mean, can we spend the money any way we want? Or we have to put it in those three buckets, as you said?
It has to be in those.
Get some clarity on the three buckets.
It has to be in those three buckets. The three buckets being response to public health emergency or its negative economic consequences, provision of premium pay to eligible workers, revenue replacement, investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, and specifically, non-eligible activities or all of the activities you just mentioned, being stabilization, debt, pensions, and things of that nature.
So that's a broad stroke there. We could use, have we lost revenue and are we going to need some or all of those funds for shortfalls to make payroll?
So we did do a lost revenue.
I don't know if our excise tax revenue is up or down. I don't know how many people are buying new cars in the last year, for instance. That used to be like 800, 900,000.
Our tax collection rate was at 99.9%, so there wasn't any issues with collection of taxes. However, the way that the calculation is broken down is you're comparing the 16 months to 12 months during the pandemic. And therefore, when you do the numbers, it looks as though a rough estimate would be 1.5, would be determined as lost revenue. Lost revenue is the most flexible of the categories. It is almost as general revenue to be used for those specific shortfalls. We are getting that number verified by the auditors because the biggest thing with these funds is that if we use them and we use them incorrectly, then we have to give those funds back. And it's very difficult to give those funds back once they've been allocated.
So if I heard you correctly, our shortfall is going to be what, 1.5 million?
Of the 2.1 being allocated towards us.
So that leaves 600. So we have exactly 600 to spend on a truck and nothing left over.
The lost revenue doesn't have to be, the lost revenue could be spent on multiple different projects, but you could put them in those two different categories, yes.
What I'm getting at is if our revenue lost is 1.5 million, if we don't find a million and a half, then we're going to have cuts and we're not going to be able to have milk money. So we got to maintain status quo before we go buy new things. So if we set aside 1.5 million, then we're treading water, it sounds like to me, and we have just enough to the dollar.
So the budget is tight, but at the same time, a lot of the monies that we just allocated for free cash covered some of the budgetary shortfalls that occurred in fiscal year 2021. Specifically, the fire department had some overages. That was all accounted for at the last annual town meeting in addition to the special town meeting. It did lower our free cash numbers, though. So there was a consequence, if you will, but we are funded.
And we hit stabilization about a month ago. So let me ask you this. Do we have to buy the truck for cash, 600,000? Or could we hedge a bet, so to speak, and pay 500 and finance 100,000 and give ourselves a cushion? Are we really tight on this or can we just say yes and spend the 600,000 without worrying about it? That's what I'm uncertain on, you know? Do you have to wait to get final numbers before we say yes?
So it's up to the board. I know that, like we said, of the calculations that we preliminary did, we have about 1.5 million, which we think would qualify as lost revenue. We're waiting to get those numbers confirmed. We do have and have already received $1 million from the allocation, both in a mix of the direct allocation from the federal government and the county allocation. So we do have those funds, and we have not used them, and they were given to us back when they first made the direct allocation back in March, I believe, May, and then the second one came over the summer. So if the board would like to wait for us to get the lost revenue funds, then they're more than welcome to do so. We have until 2026 to expend the monies and 2024 to make the allocations themselves.
Like they needed a truck yesterday because it's out of service, right?
That's correct. And right now, to save money, I'm looking at a demo instead of a specked truck. A specked truck goes between 800 and 850,000, where this truck is going to go for about 600,000. So I'm saving 200 to 250,000 because it's not specked, it's a demo.
We're not going to get a Rosenbaum, are we?
No, we are not.
Mac? Oh, they don't make them anymore. Sorry, I couldn't resist. We're going to get a good truck, and if it seems like you have one, it's lined up.
Yes, I do, and it's on the state bid, so it's under the procurement law for.
So if we don't grab it, someone else is going to grab it. So you think, strike while the iron's hot, if we dilly-dally, snooze, we lose? Is that what you're saying? How long to get final numbers? Days, weeks, or next year? I mean, if we could get the answer in a week, I'd be, yeah, let's find out where we're at so we don't come up, you know, half a million short and we're sitting here, you know, what happened. But if we're close and we could make it up with stabilization or, you know, creative financing another way, then I'd go along with it.
Mr. Chairman?
I just don't want to get bushwhacked, that's all I'm saying.
He said.
Go ahead.
Actually, Dan, I think what you're saying makes some sense. The lost revenue money, we need to have the auditors confirm, right? Correct, okay, so we need that. So we took the truck off the warrant during the pandemic, right? Waiting for this American Relief Act money.
This year, yes. Before, I don't know what happened.
Okay, well, sorry for that year. But so we know that this needs to happen. I guess the question will be, how does it happen? Does it happen all from American Relief Act money? Or do we combine it with some stabilization? I guess, you know, we'd want to see the other items on the list because it's the restrictions. I mean, I know we can do the truck with that money. I just want to see what other items are going to be put on the list. And I feel like your truck is a definite priority, so one way or the other, whether it's American Relief Act and stabilization or all American Relief Act, we just need to figure out which way to go on it. Is there any chance of any grant help towards this at all?
We've put in again for the AFG grant to replace the truck. The problem is, trucks are not a priority.
What?
Trucks are not a priority.
If to walk to the fire.
Safety equipment, like personal protective equipment, is priorities. Air packs are priorities.
Okay.
Those are the priorities. The fire trucks are fourth or fifth.
So would any equipment on the truck qualify for any help? I know sometimes it costs money to equip the trucks.
Yes, but we have the equipment. It's engine three's got already. I've got all the hose. I just need the truck with the ladders.
You just need a truck, okay. So we just, we need to just put the other items on the list and hear back because the 2.1 million is the American Relief Act money, correct?
2.1 million is from the federal allocation. But there is an allocation coming from the state.
Yes.
But that is more of a competitive process, which means that municipality within the state to qualify for such funding.
And the 1.5 million lost revenue would come from?
The direct allocation. So of the 2.1, 1.5 could be used as local, could be used as lost revenue.
Which gives us more.
Flexibility.
Flexibility, I get it. I understand now. So that, we have more flexibility with the 1.5 million if it is qualified as lost revenue. It's not as restricted.
Yeah.
And we do have a pretty good amount in the stabilization fund. So would, I mean, I think your truck is definitely a priority. I think we just have to put our list together and figure out.
You're asking the wrong guy if it's a priority. I think so.
It's a priority, and we know that too. And I think we just need to get the complete list. Water and sewer is going to submit some items. Anybody else? I mean, capital-wise, I guess I'm wondering, is there anything else you think?
There is a potential to explore additional capital items, such as some vehicles that the highway department has had on their capital budget as well.
Okay.
Dan, you had a question?
Yes. I just, I want to be 100% of it, 99%, but that's enough to fail. So we had some promises in the school district from the governor at Beacon Hill. They were going to fund certain things, and then we got a bill for 111,000. So, you know, I don't know who I trust, okay? So are these funds guaranteed? They're in-house or they're out-house and we're waiting for an IOU from Beacon Hill? Because, you know, until I see it, I don't believe it. Because they're politicians up there on the hill, and I don't know that they care about Little Groveland.
Yes.
So, you know, and it might not just be, we're off 100 grand. I don't want to be off 2.1 million. I want to know that these are guaranteed. We can spend the money on lost revenue and we go buy your truck, and then I'll vote for it. But if it's up in the air on a maybe, you've got to wait. So.
So we have $1 million in our possession right now, and we are going to get the next batch come spring, 12 months from the time we received our original allocation. So we will get the second allocation from the direct federal allocation in May, and then we will get the Essex County one in the summer. And then we'll complete.
And it's in writing, it's guaranteed. We will get that money. It's not discretionary with somebody else.
We've signed the documents telling them that we want the funds that they said we could have, essentially.
Yeah, because we have a million. If we give you the six, now we're left with four. If we come up a million and a half short, then we're, we have four and we're nine short. We better hope that we get the nine, or we're going to have some real problems. Now, I'm going to ask you a question. I think I already know the answer to it. Can you wait till the spring for that money?
I don't know if the demo is going to be available.
So that's a no?
I don't know that the demo is going to be available.
It's a big risk.
Yes, it is.
Are there two demos? Are there three?
The only demo that I know of right now, and like I said, it's under the state bid, so it meets the procurement laws. So we can do this quickly and get the truck. If not, the truck may disappear to another department that wants to save 200,000 instead of specking one.
Okay, I got to ask you one more question.
Firefighters are like children. When they start specking fire trucks, they want every toy in the store.
I understand that. We bought a Rosenbaum, but anyways, we need a truck for safety.
Correct.
You know, can you wait? That's like saying, will there be fires between now and the springtime? I get it, I'm not that stupid. You know, if there's a fire, you need the truck. But there's a gamble whether or not we get the funds. I mean, I just, I have a, you know, a pit in my stomach on a, you know. We're going to send you 2.1 million, yeah, okay. Easter bunny comes in April. So enough said.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think 600,000 seems like a bargain. Replacing a truck that is 30, 31 years old. It's outlived its life expectancy. It's what, 30, 31 years old? It's not running. We're going to need to come up with money at some point, whether it be through this or whether it be through a warrant article at the town meeting to raise the money. We're going to be facing a new engine company at some point soon, and this seems like a good way to get it. I'm surprised you're able to come up with a demo. 600,000 is a bargain. I'm all for it. We can swing it. I think we ought to go for it. Rebecca, do we need a vote on this or not? Or just a go-ahead with it?
If you would like to vote to move forward with the actual purchase of the truck, yes, I would suggest a vote.
Okay.
Somebody want to make a motion to move forward with this on a vote? Vote for.
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me?
I'll make a motion.
You make a motion. Motion, is there a second?
Motion is for how much?
I'll make a motion for, to appropriate 600,000.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion for, to appropriate $600,000.
That's correct.
From existing funds of $1 million earmarked for public safety to purchase the truck that you have been looking at.
Motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
A second?
Yes.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? None?
Is Bill O'Neill still participating?
Yeah, he is. He's still on there. Uh, Bill, there's a motion on the floor and a second. Are you in favor or not?
Yes.
Yes. Kathy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Nice presentation. I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I thought you were all ready for it anyway. Okay, we, uh, these others, we do have a request from the garden club. Do you want to address those?
So there's two other requests that came forward. The Groveland Garden Club had requested $6,000 in lost revenue. I wouldn't categorize it in the lost revenue category because it's not the same type of calculation. But that could potentially fit into the negative economic consequences since they're essentially arguing that based upon the pandemic, they were unable to hold their sales, which generate a lot of their revenue, and that means that they were unable to upkeep the building that they currently have a lease with the town to maintain. I don't know if the years from the garden club to speak on that. But essentially, they helped put together the memo that you have in your packet for consideration. And then if the board would like to move forward until that person can come forward and discuss more of their request. The other request is brought the board out for test kits, COVID-19 test kits. I believe I saw Anita in the back there who can speak more directly to that. That is a new document that was in your packet. It wasn't in your original packet. Anita had put some information together based upon some recent regulation changes.
All right, uh, Claire, are you, are you involved with the garden club? Are you in, are you involved with the garden club?
I just joined it.
Oh, okay. I mean, there's something you're not involved in?
I don't really know anything about this.
Oh, okay. All right, well, why don't we wait until somebody can, Anita, do you want to, do you mind speaking on this, uh, these COVID tests?
Certainly.
I don't know what we would have done if you said no.
Well, I got to tell you, I feel like a Yorkshire terrier in a pit bull contest at a dog show. I'm looking for a.
I'm looking for a couple of crackers here. So, um, uh, we have a modest request, I think. We would very much, as everybody knows, the, uh, the governor and the administration put, uh, a lot of free test kits into circulation a couple of weeks ago, within the last couple of weeks, to 102 towns and municipalities in Massachusetts. And that was also, uh, with that, with that generosity, came a message that as soon as they could, they would open up the contract vendors for the state, known vendors for the state, who were making these test kits and make the cities and municipalities who were not part of that original group, uh, give them a chance to offer test kits to their population, um, at a discount, at the state discount. That came in like so fast. I, I, my head was spinning. So we really had to scramble together and, and make a decision whether we could participate in this or not. And of course, we don't have any money. So Rebecca indicated that this would be likely a very appropriate. And in one of the documents that we got, that ARPA money is an appropriate, uh, funding source for this request. We are looking to purchase four cases at 90 items a case, 90 test kits, for the sum of $5,760. Five, seven, six, oh. There's two test kits in each box. So that would make 720 residents, um, served in testing. So we thought between $5,000 and $6,000 would be a reasonable ask. The first bid that we got in is a local company in Canton, and, and they can get them to us pronto. They're ready to ship. And the cost works out to about $16 a test kit or $8 a test. More importantly, the question is, is how, what's our, the, the, our intent, our distribution intent on this? And I think in the little thing I gave you, we're looking to still continue to serve along the guidance of the state. The financially distressed, um, unemployed, senior, um, and, uh, fixed income groups first. We don't know what the actual requests are going to be, but we've been getting steady calls, four or five calls a day, people dropping in, asking if we have test kits. So we're thinking that this number is reasonable. It will serve 720 people, giving them an opportunity. And we thought at a pretty reasonable price, somewhere between $5,700 and $6,000. We're waiting for one more bid to come in on Monday. We have four outstanding, people haven't called us back yet, but another one has, has been in touch and they're coming Monday. If it's less than $16, we'll probably look to them because we, then we could get some more. But at the very, at the very most, it would be $16 a box. And we're looking to, um, just get a little snippet of the ARPA pie, um, for the Board of Health and for the residents of, exclusively the residents of Groveland. Any questions?
Who's going to give them out and how long can you get, can you, before you get them?
Well, I, I, if we go with this one company, probably within the week. They're ready to ship. And, um, we anticipate that the distribution will come through the Board of Health and the Council on Aging. So we would give the Council on Aging so many for, because they're open very early in the morning and, and they, they have access to their clients. And it's convenient for them. We can also deliver them through, with the van and stuff like that. So we haven't talked about the logistics of that, but it's doable. And then people can come into the Board of Health and get them right in our office. The, we also anticipate a, an inventory sheet and a distribution sheet so that we can track the, uh, the inventory. And, and so we're not just, you know, handing them out willy-nilly and then the box is empty. So we will have an idea of who got, when they got, when, when was the distribution, how many people were interested, age group even. So it'll give us some data that we don't have right now.
One, one more question. Will they, all those companies you, you have on the list, they, do they all deliver?
You, you mean ship for ship?
Deliver here to?
Yes, they're manufacturers.
The manufacturer will deliver to the town. Okay.
Yes.
Anybody got any questions for, uh, yeah, for Anita? Dan?
Such a hot, hot button issue, but, um, are these going to be, it seems to me if you buy them, you only have 700 only, 7,000 people in town, plus or minus, right? Are you going to offer them to people that are at risk? Because?
Yes.
Only?
No. I just told you what the population would be. We're mostly targeting people who don't have disposable income to go out and buy kits themselves.
Well, then, that's, it's income-based. It should be needs-based. So you let people know that.
As was the original allotment from the state.
How much do they cost each?
Well, they'll run, depending on the street, they'll run anywhere from, well, street, the pharmacies, from $10 to $25 a kit. That's the price on the, to the public.
I don't know if it'll happen, but let's just say every mom and dad out there says, oh, I want my kid tested before they go back to school on Monday.
We're not serving that purpose.
Okay, so you'd say no to those people?
Yeah, well, it would depend. I said, we're certainly willing to listen to what the issue is. If they don't have any money and they can't get the kid back in school, that's a different story. So we're not, we're not playing, I'm not a biblical person, but there's the one where you.
God, you're not playing God, but there has to be some criteria.
There has to be criteria.
Or you can waste them on people like, like me.
It's not, it's, the, the thing is, is that most everybody in our community, and why we weren't included in the original allotment, is that we don't meet the criteria that was set out by the state. They have huge populations or larger populations of high-risk personnel as well as, um, uh, an economic population that's below the poverty, the federal poverty guidelines. I don't know what the, I don't know in Groveland what that number might look like. I, I don't imagine it's very high. We're asking people who can afford to buy their own tests, to buy their own tests when they need them, as they've been doing all along. But there are people out there, and we know they're there. We know there are seniors. We know there are people who don't speak very good English. We know there are people who live from paycheck to paycheck or don't work at all and have no access to this item. It could mean the difference between supper that week or a test. We know there are some of those people around. And so, and we know there's over 2,000 seniors in this city, in the town. So we're looking at the vulnerable population or the biggest at-risk population and the ones that we'd like to draw into the healthcare system and, and, and give them some, some control of their own health. If we end up with a lot, not a lot of interest and a lot of tests left over, then I think we can open them up to first come, first served. But we had to have, we had to look at what, what is our population, what we're aiming at. And that's why that number just, just came up. And I, I thought somewhere between $5,000 and $6,000 wasn't, wasn't out of reach.
Kathy?
Yeah, um, actually, I applaud the effort. I, I think that, um, especially for, for elderly going out, trying to find a store that still has a kit, going out, being in a store, waiting in line in a store, they might feel a level of, of anxiety and risk. And if we can help lessen that, that's great. And I don't know how you would have data as far as high-risk health issues, but I suppose I'll let you guys, you're the Board of Health, you figure that out. I think it's a start. I think it's a positive start for the town just to try and do something. And I, I understand what you're saying. We didn't qualify as a city or town with enough of the lower income to get these shipped right away, unfortunately.
And the majority of the people coming in are with 60 and over, asking for a little help. I, I want to comment too on, I believe the schools have already been at this and have their own.
They've given, I know, we were all given a double kit.
The schools have these test kits, these free test kits that they're using. But we, we're not involved in that jurisdiction at all.
Right, so we, we have it all at school.
I just want to make sure that the people get them that need them.
I agree. I agree. We're, we're, that's what we're aiming for.
It's not just anybody shows up, I'm here for my test kit.
Correct. Correct.
So as long as you screen them, can you afford it? No. Okay.
Bill, you got any questions for Anita?
No, uh, just a couple of comments. First, I want to applaud you and commend you for being as proactive as you possibly can. From first-end experience, I know these kits are extremely difficult to get in the metropolitan areas because of the populations. I, I personally had to go all the way to Epping, New Hampshire to find a kit over the weekend. And, you know, whatever we can do to keep the population safe, I'm all for, um, you know. No matter what you like it or not, we are our brother's keeper. So keep up the good work. I applaud it. Thank you.
Thank you. What the hell appreciates it.
So do we need to do a motion?
Anita, um, I, I keep getting asked a question about testing. People want to go get tested. Why, can you give me a reason for testing somebody without any symptoms?
Sure. People can have, be COVID-positive and not have any symptoms. So if they're going to a wedding party or they're going to somebody's house, it's not uncommon for a baby shower, for example, for people to limit the number of people that can come, and they have to show a full vaccination with booster, wear a mask, and a current negative test. You can be walking around and completely infecting people and not feel sick at all.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Anybody else?
Regular typhoid mary is what you're saying.
She was a dandy.
Uh, Dan, you had something?
So if you get tested and you're negative, you're safe?
Well, theoretically.
So theoretically, I could test myself before the meeting?
You're asking me for an absolute and I can't give it to you. If it's done correctly, if the person does step one, two, three correctly.
He still has to wear his mask. I know where he's going on this.
Yes, exactly. It's obvious.
Put that mask on.
Do I have to wear a mask if I get tested? Every single time I'll buy a test so I don't come here without a mask on.
I'm just going to conclude by saying, you should be vaccinated, you should be fully vaccinated. If you get it, you will probably survive and, and live a nice, long life. Wear your mask, even though you don't need to, inside and outside as best you can.
Pogs up my glasses.
Mine too. Wash your hands a lot, sanitize your common things, and, and avoid crowds. That's the only mitigate, those are the only public health strategies that worked two years ago, and they're working now. Well, one year ago because the vaccine wasn't available two years ago. But those are the only things that work. The best thing you can do for yourself is all of those four things all of the time. And then, what, the tools we have to help you, if you're going out, you're going to go to a, a large venue, and you, and they make that a standard, you have an ability to test. So, so we know you had a negative test, we're assuming it was done right. That's why the PCR is the gold standard. But these home tests, 99% of the time, they're accurate.
What's PCR stand for?
The, 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 this is the gold standard test that's done in the lab. It takes like a day to come back. So the, the important thing is the, uh, if people follow the instructions on the back of the package and do it correctly, there's a, they should get the result that they're looking for. It'll either be positive or negative. There's a possibility they don't go deep enough or they don't get a good enough sample, and it might have an invalid test at that point. You wouldn't know. So, so there's possibility of failure from technique point of view, but the tests themselves are, are not in question. It's, it's generally speaking, a technique kind of thing, or, or you're right on the cusp of negative and positive. So most of the time, if you're negative, you're negative.
Okay.
But if you're not sick.
Can I ask her one more question? Yeah, sure. One more.
I spoke with you in your office a while ago, right?
Oh, yes, that's a vivid memory of mine, yes.
We had a frank discussion.
We did indeed. I enjoyed it very much.
And I want to be positive because that's just how I'm wired. So I hear a lot about testing and, and numbers and COVID counts are up. It's data. But what I don't hear from the top down, whether it's the White House or our governor, is what people can do to improve their general health so that if you get COVID, you can combat it. So, you know, I'm not a physician. But, you know, my wife's a nurse and a lot of people that are coming into the hospital, they have, um, you know, they have underlying health issues. One of the major, uh, uh, risk factors is obesity. COPDs from smoking. So there's a lot of things people could be doing. And again, talk to your doctor, I'm not your doctor. You know, but it's just general guidelines on, you know, exercise more, sleep better, bolster your immunity, eat proper nutrition, maybe you lose a few pounds, you know?
Always good advice.
Myself included. But I don't hear enough of that positive, how to improve your health, go for a walk. It's, it's kind of mask up and bunker down and hide from the virus, and I'm not so sure the virus is going away. So.
I don't think it's going away much too soon at all, and there's probably another one on the way.
So is, is there anything the Board of Health can do to, you know, basically counsel people and help people with, you know, being healthier?
Um, down the road, we may ask for a little bit more money for our own infrastructure. We have three distinct employees, all working part-time, one nurse, one sanitation agent, and, um, and a, basically Lori, who's the backbone of the office, does all of our work for us and looks up things for us. But the public health nurse is just one person, and then you have a board. We have a nurse on our board, but most, most boards don't have nurses or doctors on them. They're just regular folks, more engineers and sanitation people than, than anything. So for us to undertake on the magnitude, I think, that you're looking for, would take probably more staff and more money. And right now, that isn't something we're prepared to ask for, although we have discussed this. ask for, although we have discussed this, like I did with you. There can be a better effort at smoking cessation, there can be more education, I think, in the schools. I think it starts way back before adulthood on proper nutrition and eating habits, et cetera. So, there could be a joint thing between school nurses and public health to try and embrace that and make that a focus of public health down the road. But for the purposes of this conversation, I don't, I don't, I really, I agree with you, but it's outside the scope of this conversation right now.
Thank you.
Anita, any?
Thank you for asking that though.
On the same way, just to expand upon Dan, any chance of, like, some PSAs to put on the local access channel that the Board of Health could do?
Yeah, I'm kind of high on that. I've only had like 20-something days of actual work, so I haven't had a really a chance to catch up on the hump I'm trying to get over, so I feel like I'm in control on a day-to-day basis. But we certainly have utilized that, and Rebecca has put two things on for me like that. I don't know how to do that, but she's been extremely accessible, and I'm looking forward to utilizing that a little bit more. Just, not so much PSAs, but out on the Facebook and out on the town website, that are significant messages to the population at large with respect to exactly these kinds of things. Trying to improve personal habits, you know, and exercise and food and stuff like that. And this is the kind of thing that I think we can do by just simply maybe having a conference or a little bit of a sit-down. We could do this at, on Groveland Days, have lots of, assemble a lot of information regarding that so we can distribute it publicly. There are things we can do without a lot of money. It's just going to take time and personnel.
Okay, thank you. Bill, you have anything else?
No, no. I was just going to text Rebecca and say, I think I'm done for the, I'm just getting a little too tired to even keep up with the conversation right now. I'm sorry.
Feel better.
Anita, thank you for, you answered a lot of questions. You must have anticipated the questions because you answered most everybody before they got a chance to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. So, they're looking for, do we need, Anita, before you leave, do we, do we need to vote or, you're requesting a 57-50? Do we need to vote to approve the 57-50 that, for the Board of Health?
Yes, I would recommend that the Board of Selectmen make all, wouldn't take a formal vote for all expenditures for the ARPA funds.
For, okay, so we do a separate one for, we did the fire department, we'll do a separate one for Board of Health. I think this is important. $6,000?
Yeah, rounded up.
I think it's well worth it. So, you want to make a recommendation for $6,000?
So, make a motion to spend up to $6,000 for the Board of Health to be able to purchase the COVID test kits. I'll leave it up to the Board of Health to determine who they buy that from.
Okay, the motion on the floor, is there a second, Dan?
A second, yes.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? None. All in favor, $6,000 for the Board of Health, three in favor, two absent. Thank you very much. Rebecca, we got a request with hours of some of the employees looking for money, that's going to have to go to the auditors first?
No.
No.
So, that is the discussion of premium pay. So, some of the departments have put together some of the information that was included in your packets. I believe there was information supplied by the police chief, the fire chief, Sam Jocelyn with the building department, Lori Binstone with the health department, and then Rennie Carroll with the highway department. I believe there was also a submittal from Steve McPherson with the facilities. I know we had reached out to the water and sewer department. I know that Sam had sent an email out to other departments as well, he was helping facilitate this effort. So, that information was all submitted to you in your packets.
The one I don't see here is, unless I missed it, is electric.
They did not submit anything, then?
Yeah, we need to get, we need to get them, I'll contact the manager up there and see if we can get something. Do we need to, does this need more study, these figures?
I think it warrants a conversation, and the Board of Selectmen needs to be, or need to set the guidelines as to what they would like to see, whether or not they would like to entertain premium pay, whether or not they would like to entertain premium pay at the max of $13 an hour for a cap of $25,000 per eligible employee, whether or not they would like to cut that in half, whether or not they would like to lower that even more, or what is it, is the priority of the Board of Selectmen in this particular category and what they would like to see done?
Dan?
Shouldn't we find out? Again, goes back to the numbers. I mean, are we spending Monopoly money here or real money? Do we have the funds?
As I told you, the $1 million is in the account, you just spent $600,000 of it with an additional $6,000 that you just gave to the Board of Health, so I, the remaining funds are...
Available, but we don't know if we have a shortfall in revenue of 1.5 million, so that...
The shortfall is not necessarily a shortfall, per se. It's not that we don't have the money, but the money and the free cash and the stabilization fund were utilized to recap because of the pandemic. So, we use more of our free cash and more of our stabilization funds for our budget because of the pandemic. So, it's not as though we have a shortfall, per se, but our free cash levels and stabilization levels are lower than what they should be.
We had about $2 million. What do we have now?
So, it's really up to the Board of Selectmen is how they want to approach it.
I think we need better numbers before we decide it. I'm not against somebody getting a bump in pay, but I mean, we can't spend money we don't have and then sit here in April or May and ask people for Prop 2.5 overrides. I don't want to be that guy, I'm not doing it. So, I think bad facts make bad decisions. We need the auditors to chime in and what are our real numbers. And I'd like to see something in writing that we're going to get that second, second funding in the springtime.
I can give you the contract that Ed signed that allowed us to get our first allocation. I don't know if that's enough proof for you.
Well, we might have signed up for it, but I don't know if it's unilateral that they can change their mind. That's why I want to scrutinize that document, okay? They did it in the school district, so it all depends, devil's in the details on the words. Ed might have signed it, the board might have said, yeah, we're eligible, give us the money. And there's always a, you know, not always, but often, there's a subject to, you know, subject to appropriations or final numbers. So, that's why I'm hesitant, okay? I'm not so sure we have the funds guaranteed 100%.
We didn't need to vote on any of the projects tonight, per se. It was just to have an initial conversation of some of the projects that were before you and to give the employees some understanding of exactly where the Board of Selectmen was headed with whether or not they'd entertain premium pay at all. A lot of communities have said no. Other communities have put in tiers where they max it out at 2,000, and then there's another tier at 1,000. The state's doing a frontline bonus payment for certain individuals, but they must be income-eligible. So, there's a lot of different things happening, and I think that the employees are seeing the money and that they're just curious as to whether or not they're going to get an opportunity to take some of those funds. So, I think they're just looking, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's the majority of them here this evening, to get a better understanding from the Board of Selectmen exactly what they can expect. Is it going to be a decision that's going to be made later on? Are there going to be parameters in place? What should they be looking at? Is it a lost cause? Do they get anything? I mean, I know that Sam was the one who wrote one of the letters, but I know both of the chiefs are here, and if they want to come up and speak on behalf of what they would like, it wouldn't be a bad idea to entertain them as they've been sitting here.
And my question is, is it so much per employee, so much per hours that they worked?
It's up to us. It's, we have to decide that.
The max is $13 an hour, up to $25,000 per eligible employee, but you can decrease that based upon what the Board of Selectmen would like, per hour or a cap.
Okay. Either one of the chiefs want, or both want to speak on it? Chief, you're up again.
To answer your question on the hours for the fire department, I broke it down to when we were actually at calls. And I broke it down to each individual, and the total time we spent at a call, not on duty, at the call, was 8,629 hours. If you do that by the 13, it's $112,177. Now, if you're going to cap it, there's different aspects. For instance, I spent 773 hours at calls, but I was on full-time for the entire state of emergency. Others spent 200, 300, 400 hours. So, it would depend each individual on how many hours they spent at a call. I don't have it broken down how much each would make, I'm just giving you the total of the 8,900 hours that the firefighters left their house and went to calls, and that's how many hours they spent on the scene. I didn't add, I worked 40 hours a week, I didn't expect to get 40 hours a week of premium pay only when I went on a call. That's how I broke it down.
Okay. Question for the chief? Dan?
Depends on the funding, is what I said. So...
Oh, I did it, you asked how I broke it down in hours.
Is that, was that with dialogues with your other firemen and staff and everything, and just as to what was, what people wanted or what they thought was fair? I mean, what...
It was kind of easy in my part.
What's the basis of it, I guess?
The time is, I worked predominantly at call fire department, they're not on duty 40 hours a week. There's only three of us that work 40 hours a week. So, I had a conversation with them and said, the time that we spent on calls is what I'm putting in for, not the time that we spent in the station. And they, the other two full-timers agreed to that, and the callmen, they're coming from home, they're getting paid for the hours that they already did. They don't do what, I shouldn't say that, they do hours of training, that's not part of this, this is just when they were at calls. Actually, in the field at calls. That's how I broke it down. I figured that was fair as well.
Kathy, got a question for the chief?
No, I just, I like that he's providing us this information, it's exactly what we need because we need to start figuring out how much we have and what we can do with that. And certainly, the other, some towns have already made a decision, some towns have made the wrong decision and gotten in trouble for it. So, I want to make sure that we, you know, cross the Ts and dot the Is and don't end up in that predicament where, you know, we try to do something and it backfires. So, I think you've given us all the information that we could ever need from you for the fire department. I don't have any more questions about that.
Mr. Chair.
It, I like the way you, I like the way you broke it down. I wish the other department heads had done the exact same thing, broken it down as far as dealing with the people. And, you know, just looking at some of these, it just looks like they took the hours that they worked for a week times 70 weeks, and we need the time that they were actually working with the people, like you, like you did, answering the call, not in the station. Jeff, did you break it down the same way?
Thank you. We didn't break it down the same as the fire department because we operate in such a different way, where the officers are on duty and they're talking to people or going out to calls. It would be very difficult to break it down, the exact time they spent, I don't know if you're looking like when they were talking to somebody or at a call. I could try to do that for you, but no, I didn't break it down that way because, again, it's, the officers are on duty. I'm just going to plead with the board that you just recognize what the officers did and the firefighters and the other employees for the town, including our facilities worker, Steve. I at least want to tell you this, the officers in Groveland didn't change their mission. They all signed up for this, nobody complained, they came to work every day. A lot of towns around us, they let their officers work 12-hour shifts and then get extra time off. A couple of communities let their officers work 24-hour shifts, and then they were off for several days. The officers and dispatches in Groveland came to work every day, and they did do a lot of calls and put their families at risk going home, you know, being maybe contagious and dealing with their loved ones. So, I think it's a once-in-a-lifetime chance to recognize the town employees for going above and beyond, I think, in some cases, that there is some money available that isn't going to affect the taxpayers directly. And I would just ask that maybe, you know, that they are recognized, that we're all recognized for what we do every day. And again, this, I want to include everybody when I, when I speak, but just not to be out of line, I do talk more about the officers and the dispatches because that's what I deal with and as the fire chief deals with his folks, so. But I just appreciate any consideration, and if you would like, Mr. Chairman, for me to break it down more, if there is going to be consideration, I would certainly try to do that, but again, it would, it's more difficult. I'd have to look at everybody, like dispatches, you know, they're taking calls all day long. The officers are in and out, they're dealing with a lot of different calls, so I was hoping that it could be accepted under the terms of how many hours they worked. But again, if you, if you're all interested and open to this, I would do whatever the board's wishes.
Well, it, I think we get some planning to do, so figuring out to do, do we want a lump sum for each employee? Do we want based upon hours? I think we, I think we should wait, wait till we have a full board and discuss how we want to, how we want to do that.
I would agree, I mean, I understand, I wouldn't expect anything more tonight, but maybe consider, you know, we have part-time dispatches and officers, and just like the per diem firefighters, maybe it's based on, you know, the hours they worked. And again, even our part-time people are making like, you know, 20 bucks an hour to complement them with something I think would go a long way as well. So, again, thank you just for your consideration.
Okay. Yeah, you know, we certainly appreciate both the police department, the fire department, the other agencies, highway department, water department, electric company, Board of Health, dealing with it wasn't easy. Building custodian, we're going to have to figure out how, how we're going to do it. I don't see any problem with coming up with some, some money to help, help everybody out and thank them for, monetarily for sticking it out. Comments?
Well, I mean, I think, I know that our custodian and our inspectors and our fire department and our police department, there was no change in hours or days during the state of emergency. They, they remained on duty at all, all the time. We did decrease the duty hours of the water and sewer and the highway department to try to avoid one of them becoming ill and taking out the whole department. So, I think we do have to consider that while we do this, but I do want to try and work the numbers and see what we can come up with. I think that's, that's really where we have to go to, we have to go to the numbers. But we have to take into account the people that were there seven days a week all the time and never asked for a change in shift or duties. And myself, I got to go home and hide in my house for a while, so, you know, I was one of the fortunates, you know, the schools shut down, but you couldn't do that, you had to keep going out on the calls and going home. And I can't imagine what your families were thinking, like, how about sleep in the garage tonight? So, so we really, I think the whole town can probably never thank you properly for everything that was done during this and still continues to be done, but the least we can do is try and see what we can come up with, and we will work on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you both for coming in. So, we want to, we want to make a motion to table it for, to the next meeting for further discussion. Did you have a question, Dan?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the answer is yes, it's just a matter of how much. I think we got to, you know, oh, yeah, we have revenue. we got to, you know, yeah, we have revenue decrease, one-point-five billion. We got a grant, or however you want to label it, two-point-one. We just spent six. So we got one-point-five. So, you know, if that's just break even, we should do something.
Oh, sure.
Can't spend money we don't have, but there's money in stabilization. So there's something and, you know, I mean, I'm married to a nurse and she goes to work every day and bedside. And, you know, there's a lot of people that bailed. There's a lot of nurses that bailed out. There's a lot of young people that don't want to work full-time. There's a lot of people that bailed. And so to all the people that stuck it out, thank you.
I don't think we have to table it because it's under discussion and possible vote, but I think we've begun the discussion part. And we need to just keep it rolling forward till we figure out what to be, what can be done.
Okay. You want to table it, then?
Well, I think we just keep it, we don't need to table it. It's just discussion and possible vote. We didn't vote, so.
Thank you. We just add it for an agenda meeting.
Correct. Yeah, bring it forward.
It just continues. But I'll make a motion if you want.
Rebecca, could you add that to the agenda for the next meeting, please? Thank you very much. Thank you, guys, for coming in. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Look at him, like, no thanks.
Richie, lock that door, will you? Whatever, was there a fire drill or something? The place is bailing right out.
They don't like sitting around.
Next on the agenda, town administrator time. Rebecca, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So just a couple of updates. I just wanted to let the board know that Waste Management has informed the town that due to lengthy disposal times and multiple mechanical breakdowns, they are a day behind. They had stated that they were going to be putting a recovery plan in place that was supposed to be today. Unfortunately, we are still fielding calls. That trash pickup did not occur. Lori has been doing a fantastic job at fielding those calls and taking those records for future conversations with Waste Management. Usually those calls are from very frustrated homeowners, which we totally understand. And Lori has been great at trying to take that situation and make it positive and get those figures so that we can rectify the issue. In addition to that, Roy Boyer has confirmed that he will participate at the meeting on January eighteenth concerning the board's request for an update as to where they stand with their service levels. Another update is to let the board know that the town was awarded a Complete Streets Grant from Mass DOT for four-hundred thousand dollars. This is going to be for the second phase of the Route ninety-seven sidewalk project on School Street. So Rennie is gearing up to get that started. We're really excited. It'll be a great addition and make our streets safer. Another update is that the construction on the community trail has begun. I'm sure you've seen the construction vehicles going in and out. Last week, the crews continued excavating the pathway for gravel along Ashcroft Street towards School Street. This week, they will continue excavating and fill in sections between Center Street and Main Street. We have provided a page on our website to update residents as to the status of this construction project. And we'll continue to update them on the website in addition to our Facebook page to let them know where we are in the construction process. Also, another update is to let you all know that we had sent out the requests to the departments for capital projects and budget requests also went out. We gave them a deadline of January fourteenth. We have engaged with ClearGov yet again. This was a software that we had used previously to get all of our budgetary information. One of the new features that they have in addition is the capital planning and personnel planning. So they will allow us to run scenarios and forecast all of the capital improvement projects that we need and, and essentially give us a better understanding of what we can fund each fiscal year. In addition, it will also look at the personnel planning. This will be great once we move forward with our wage classification study. It'll allow us to understand exactly where we are and step increases and how that'll impact the budget over a span of time. It'll also help with union agreements and things of that nature as different employees will hit different phases at different times. Another update is to let you know that we've been working with Hilltop Securities for the bond for the sewer project that was approved at annual town meeting on 2021. We've been working to also refinance some of the existing bond anticipation notes. So you will be seeing a subject matter come before you that will require your vote to move forward with the refinancing effort of that. Another update is that, I don't know if you saw today, but we are getting some roof work done here at town hall. We've been having some leaks in the veto room. In addition, we've also been having some leaks over at the library in the vestibule over there. So we're getting some gutters and we're using some of the maintenance monies to patch all of the holes in the ceilings for prior to the winter. We're hopeful that we can extend the life of the roof out another three years or so. So we have been looking for quotes to get a better understanding of exactly what the condition is and how long we can prolong that so that when we do start to look at our capital improvement projects, we can add that to the list accordingly. And then lastly, just to let you all know, I had registered to take the MMA Financial Management course over the summer. I got pushed back to the fall and then it got pushed back to the winter. So that's classes starting in January this Friday. So on Fridays until February eleventh, from eight-thirty until four PM, I will be in that class. But I'll obviously have my phone if the Board of Selectmen needs to reach me for any emergencies or anything of that nature. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Did you, you had something on the grant that we received?
The Complete Streets one?
Yeah, did, yeah, did you mention that?
Yep. So that's the Route ninety-seven sidewalk project.
That's it. Any question for Rebecca? Dan?
No.
None. Kathy?
Yes, when we have Mr. Boyer in, I received a concern from a resident who's on School Street and they're using the truck that picks up the barrels, you know, and it's crushed. So my, my question is, how can we go about purchasing the correct barrels for where they're going to use that kind of truck? The residents have asked if we can get those barrels.
Great. I can add that to the list. I actually hope to meet with Lori in the border health office on next Monday to sit down and go forward and get a list of all of the issues that have been coming through to her specifically from the residents about the trash issues and trying to put together a list of some of the major concerns that she's having with communication with Waste Management as well as the residents and trying to get that into a format so that when we do talk to Rory, we will have all that material available. And I will add the, the barrels to that list.
And, and another resident had asked, like, if the truck breaks down, can there be a robo-call that just says, Tuesday route not completed, keep it out for Wednesday? If, because right now, it seems like nobody knows.
So we can definitely try and explore that. I know that with the recent one, I had put a, a message out on Facebook. We don't have that many followers, but I did get a couple of individuals who are appreciative of the information being shared. So we can take that to another level. We do have the reverse nine-one-one or code red, as we call it. So we could definitely work to get something set up when we're notified of such. I think the biggest issue is that sometimes we're not notified until the residents start calling. So then we're being more reactive than proactive.
Right. And I, I know of myself personally, from calling into the eight-hundred number, sometimes you get through and you get to somebody and they're helpful. And then other times, you kind of just end up getting knocked out. It does, it does happen. We don't seem to have a specific code or way to say, it's someone from Groveland calling. They're just taking a call.
Yeah, I, I think that the other thing that we're exploring is we're trying to do some more with the potential, with the website and trying to get people to be able to write in their comments and concerns and not necessarily flood the border health, but to flood Waste Management and have a way of tracking all of those inquiries and not letting people have to sit on the phone for long, wait periods, but still tracking their concerns. And an email would be sent to both the border health as well as Waste Management. So we're trying to, to work and be more creative on our side to, to get the information. And hopefully, Waste Management will be responsive.
That'd be great.
Thank you very much. Moving on, selectmen's time and reports. Dan, do you have anything?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, a couple of things. Came up, and I discussed it with you, cable channel programming. Years ago, there used to be more than just board meetings on there. And then for some reason, they just went away. Other towns, and I know I have cable in my office in Danvers, and they have community activities on there. So I said, why don't we, you know, get the concert, you know, the holiday concerts on there. And I think you got the elementary school up there. But it'd be nice, in the pandemic, to show some signs of life on whatever, Channel Nine, more than watching the border selectmen reruns four times a day. So I don't know how the board feels about it, but I'd like to see, you know, the concerts at the Bagnell and the middle school and the high school. I think parents and want to see their children and your neighbors and just people, you know, going about their business and, and enjoying life best they can under the circumstances. So I don't know how the board feels about it, if they have any objections to it, but I'd like to see those holiday concerts on there. I'd like to see some sports events. I was at a game in Georgetown, Pennsyl was playing Georgetown. I talked to the camera and I said, oh, you're going to, you know, put this on the cable? He, he said it's going to be on in Georgetown, but Groveland doesn't allow it. I said, who told you that? So I got an answer. Not going to poke that bear. But why don't we have, you know, high school, middle school soccer sports? Why don't we have the, the, the football game on once a week? You know what I'm saying? I wouldn't mind seeing the high school football game, you know, if I can't go there. So enough said on that. I'd just like to see the program and have more than just board meetings over and over and over again. They're on three or four times a day. I mean, you know, once a day is enough as far as I'm concerned. If you don't catch it on Monday, grab it on Tuesday. We meet every two weeks. But I think the law allows it. We're just not doing it. And for some reason, it was curtailed.
It, I, I'll get some information from you. We'll see if we can get that high school concert on the TV. I spoke with Jason and Chris before, and they just, they just need some information on that. And we'll see if we can do that. Good suggestion. Kathy?
Well, I thought we were going to, at one point, network a little bit with the videography students at the high school, who would be fantastic at this. And that's where it was going. I think everything just kind of shut down with the pandemic. So I thought that the videography teacher was a great contact because those would be students who would be interested in getting some experience. You need to text somebody? I'll wait.
Yeah. But, but they share contact freely, right, on the, I mean, did you have any problem getting that video?
So I, I don't know personally.
Oh, you didn't do it?
I, I, exactly.
You weren't involved in that?
I basically...
It'd be a fairly extensive videography program that we could tap into.
No, I just, I don't know if it's on the PRSD YouTube channel, you know, if it's...
If it's there, can we take it? Yeah.
Can we just grab it and just put it on our access TV? I mean, that's all I'm saying. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying we need to have a production company.
No, but I'm saying that we might potentially be able to have more videography people available.
I think it'd be good for the kids at the school to get involved in...
Yes, I think it is a great thing to involve them. I love that connection.
I had one more thing, Mr. Chair. I forgot.
Oh, go ahead.
I've been inundated. I don't know if you have. And selectmen, Cassian Ellis there as well. But I get all these enough-is-enough emails.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't know what people expect me to do, but there's a process, there's a school committee, there's budgetary restraints, constraints. What we saw this evening is a process on, maybe there's some grant money available. But I don't know that now's the time to ask for permanent pay raises. And I don't know the details and the, you know, the devil in the details. But I just, I can't respond to a hundred emails. It's, it seems like a boilerplate enough is enough without any detail on it. And it's tough right now. There's people, you know, businesses are failing, people on fixed income. So, you know, you know, there's a lot of people sacrificing. And I wholeheartedly believe that those that stuck it out and are working should be rewarded. But again, it's always a problem. Where do you get the money? It's always a problem. And, and it's no disrespect to anybody if we can't pay the money. I hope it's not misinterpreted, but I don't know. Just no more emails. I get the point. Talked to the school committee and negotiated at school committee meetings and have a dialogue on what's feasible and what isn't. That's all I say on that issue.
Thank you. I don't have anything. All the unfinished business, border selectment policies and procedures, current board policies for the border selectmen. I'd like to see that. Do we have a full board? Need a motion to table that and bring it up at another meeting.
I think we're all going to table that.
Motion to table, second. I'll second that. All in favor of policies till the next meeting, table the next meeting. Opposed? None. Three in favor, two absent. Items not reasonably anticipated.
If I could make a request. The intention is for people to read them and make edits into the thing.
Kathy, that was tabled. We can't discuss that. Once, once it's tabled...
I'm just looking for...
Discussion is over.
But it's going forth to another agenda. So I was, you said it would be on the next agenda. So I was just going to say, if you could, in your...
Discussion is over. It's tabled till the next meeting. Other items not reasonably anticipated, the time of posting. I, I don't have anything. Rebecca? Nothing?
I think Dan.
Dan, you had anything from, item not anticipated? Nothing?
I don't know if it qualifies as that, or I shouldn't brought it up at the select time. But now that we have a kind of a goodest grader, yay. I'd like to make better decisions going forward. I need good information.
So I don't know if you have a due date monitor, but I kind of like to know what's coming up and to project it out of the air, you know, for instance, you know, what's our deadline for posting something for open bid? And if we miss that, what's a real deadline? What's an artificial deadline? I like the kind of a, a to-do list. I call it a DDM, a due date monitor in, in my business, you know? There's real deadlines, April fifteenth, you know? And then there's I-just-want-it deadlines, and there's more of those. So I don't know if you could, you know, somehow put that together. It might just be health insurance contracts. It's open enrollment at this point in time. And after that, you close the door on it. So just information on what's coming up, what's due. Some things are fatal if you wait too long. Other things, you know, you, you, you know, you got all the time in the world. So just want to make sure, you know, it's, you know, the contract comes up and we got to put it out for bid. If we blow that deadline, then what? So I want to avoid that. I want to make better decisions. And information is important for me. Help you, help me, help us all. So can you work on a due date monitor? And I don't know when the deadline is for setting the tax rate. I mean, I get sound bites here and there, but to put it all together, I kind of like to see it on a spreadsheet or report.
I can do my best to put something together for the next board meeting.
You know, kind of evolving thing, you know?
I can send it out every time I send out an agenda as kind of an update.
Appreciate that.
For sure.
Thank you.
Kathy, anything? Not anticipated at the time of posting?
Yes, if we could, when will we get an update on the audit?
Sorry, yes, that was on one of my bullet points that I must have missed over. So we're just about to wrap up the audit. We have a couple of outstanding items. They had asked for some sick buyback liabilities that we just provided them today. In addition to that, there was some question with one of the checking of a revenue account. So we have that. And then we have the, the OPEV valuation that we're doing, currently gathering the information for that. So we're hoping to get that finalized for the beginning of February.
Fantastic.
Thank you. Just expanding upon what Dan had mentioned, we're, we're just about, we're halfway through the year. How about taking a look at the line items and see what we have left for funding? If, if it's not ready for the next meeting, the meeting after?
I can do that.
Okay. Correspondence, we, we had most of that. Motion to adjourn. Next meeting, Tuesday, January eighteenth because of the holiday, six-thirty. Motion to adjourn?
Second. Or do you want a motion?
It, yeah, I can make it.
At eight forty-five.
Motion and a second. All in favor, adjournment. Three in favor, two absent. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Jason.